Good morning. I call to order the May 28, 2019, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please join me in a flag salute, followed by moments of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where the citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes.
Norman Manley, Salina, sent to your association, Kansas Association of County Commissioners, got a copy of your code of conduct. Do you guys even follow it, even read it? Doesn't appear to be, from what I see. In other words, is it legal, the actions you're taking? I don't think it is. It's my opinion. But I'd ask you guys to read it some more and follow your own rules and regulations. Another issue for the future, might put this in your budget, you're going to need some drone protection. Because I subscribe to Military Times, what we can do with them drones, not me. They're putting machine guns on these little drones. And I can get them. Anybody can. So you might need to consider that for your future because you're going to have to protect this county. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Lenay Meyer. I'm a citizen of Salina on Huntington Road. I just wanted to let you know that myself and Sheila attended a meeting with the Reno County jail personnel, the sheriff, and Michael Hill. And we were very impressed with the programming. And a small group of us is going to meet on Friday to say, to say, what do we do with this as citizens? And I have a list of people who I've talked to who are interested in the issues of needing jail or for more beds versus programming, whatever. And we hope to have that group grow and discuss it as a group of concerned citizens. So we'll just keep you informed. And we'd like to know more and more from your side, what all your thinking is, as that's allowed. So we can hopefully work together and come up with a solution that fits Celine County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Ratsliff, Salina. I just want to ask you, again, I know that it gets asked frequently, and also at the city commission, to reconsider somehow recording the study sessions for, what you call it, study sessions in meeting number two. You know, if at all possible, there's a lot of really good information and good discussions that occur in that room. And, you know, it would, it would really behoove us all as a community to have access to all that. So I wanted to ask you to continue to consider that in some form or other. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll bring you back to the commission for regular business then. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and second that we approve the agenda for today's public forum as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, the motion does carry. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for May 14, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we accept the county commission minutes of May 14, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and second that we approve county commission minutes of May 14, 2019. Additions, deletions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, the motion does carry. Item number three.
Approval of county commission minutes for May 21, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we accept the county commission minutes of May 21, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
Moved and second that we approve county commission minutes for May 21, 2019. Additions, deletions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, motion does carry. Item number four.
RFA number 150-19, MOW with City of Salina for easement for road and bridge right-of-way. Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So this request is to approve a right-of-way agreement with the City of Salina. This agreement grants Celine County additional 20 feet of right-of-way on the south side of Waterwell Road from Burma Road to Lightville Road. And this additional 20 feet of right-of-way will allow for some road improvement projects that we're proposing to do on Waterwell Road. An alternative to the action is, of course, to not approve the agreement. The staff does recommend that the commission approve and execute the agreement with the City of Salina. And why the City of Salina is, this is on the north side of the landfill out there, and so it's city property, and so that's why it's with the city. As far as budget impacts, the city is donating the right-of-way to Celine County, so there will be a zero cost to the county.
All right, questions or staff? Any public comment? And just for the, for the record, it is on the north side of the landfill, but on the south side of the road.
Correct.
Okay. Questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve by signature the right-of-way agreement with the City of Salina.
Second. It's been moved and second that we approve RFA 150-19 with the City of Salina for an easement for road and bridge work. Are there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, the motion does carry unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number five.
RFA number 149-19, Resolution 19-2273, Ohio and Waterwell Road Annexation. Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. This is a request by the City of Salina for annexation for a water, new water treatment facility. The location is the Waterwell Road and South Ohio Streets. The city intends to dismantle the existing structures which date from the 1940s and construct the new treatment facility. SOTI will serve residents within the urban service area as designated in both the City of Salina and Celine County comprehensive plans. Celine, Salina city limits are located on the northwest corner of Waterwell Road in South Ohio. Therefore, the subject parcel is not necessarily contiguous with the city limits. This parcel lies just outside the urban service area, but is not unusual to locate such public facilities in these types of rural development areas. The request is consistent with the spirit and intent of the county's comprehensive plan, which encourages interjurisdictional cooperation with regard to the placement of public utilities where feasible. And to quote the plan, I've got, "The plan promotes effective communication and coordination between service providers to minimize service costs and target improvements to areas that are planned for development." The plan continues the county's strategy for working cooperatively with the cities in Celine County to identify areas that are planned for urban development and establish mechanisms to allow for coordinated rational development of these areas. And that's from our comprehensive plan, Chapter Two, pages eight through nine. Furthermore, the plan states as a goal to efficiently provide for adequate public facilities and services that meet the demands of the planned land uses at a minimal cost to residents, businesses, and the county. And that's from our comprehensive plan, Chapter Three, page 15. On March 19, the county commission did direct staff to proceed with composing a road maintenance agreement, which is pending, and along with the request for annexation. And the alternatives for this particular action are to consent and approve the annexation, deny the request, or table, or continue the request until a future date. Staff is recommending approval of this annexation, since it is consistent with previous annexations. There is no budget impact for this annexation. With that, I will turn it over to you all.
My question goes back to the city limits. I thought the city limits, Darren, or anybody that can correct me on this, I thought the city limits were like a half a mile north of that area. But it says in this that you're at the northwest corner of Waterwell in South Ohio.
Right.
Which means right across the street.
Right across the street is, yeah, it's right that one corner.
So we're back to this old thing of, they're taking the land on the north, they're taking the land on the south, but they're not annexing the road. Am I correct in assuming that?
Yeah.
And, I mean, and I'm not going to stand in the way, because we, right here, we did agree to proceed with this, but on the road maintenance agreement, and I was under the understanding at that point that the, that the city limits was a half a mile north of that corner.
It is.
It is. So this is incorrect then?
No, no, the city limits abuts the property line.
The city limits abuts the property line at the intersection of Waterwell and Ohio.
Yeah.
Ohio Street. The city, the city limits, and I've got a map right here that shows that the city limits is on the northwest part of the intersection. That's correct. And the subject partial is on the southeast part. Southeast corner, yes. Okay, so it actually doesn't abut right up to it. Correct, correct. The intersection is still in the county. Okay. But I understand. Coming down South Ohio, the city limits goes clear to Waterwell Road. Coming down South Ohio, on the east side, the city limits don't come clear to Waterwell. Not to the road, it comes to the property line, yes. Does not on the east side. It does on the west side. Yeah, that's right. But on the east side, where does it stop? The city limits? On the east side, the city limits is a half a mile north of Waterwell Road. There, okay. I agree. We're still going to be back to where we were, potentially somewhere down the line, but that's, I brought my thoughts. All right, thank you, Darren. Any questions, comments from commissioners? I see, go ahead.
Yeah, one short comment. I think these last two RFAs, if approved, show the, a new era of cooperation between the city and the county, and a willingness to work together and get things accomplished for all the citizens.
I see Martha here. Martha, would you like to comment on this?
Thank you very much. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities for the city. My only comment is that I appreciate your effort looking at this. And from our standpoint at the city, having this annexed into the city limits is similar to our wastewater treatment facility. It's, if you're familiar with it, it's way out on the northeast side of the city, some distance from the city limits. But then we follow our own regulations, building permits, and then safety from EMS and fire protection, police, all fall under our jurisdiction in the future. And that's some of the value we see of being annexed into the city. So it's for the future and the safety of our facility.
You might also update us right briefly, if you could, on your, how it's proceeding and where it's headed.
Sure. We have a demolition permit for the existing building that was built in the early 1940s. It's built of very solid concrete, so we're working away on that. We're in the mediation process of removing the asbestos and those materials and the other structures. Probably don't see a lot of new work or new structures until about July. The weather has slowed us down a little bit, getting power and the work trailer in. It's a weather, rather wet site, so no, no new structures coming out of the ground, I think, till late June, early July. But we are progressing along.
What is the timetable for having that operational out there?
It's about two years.
Two years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes. At that point where, when this is going to be developed there, is, do you see a water tower going up in the area there?
No, we do not. This transfers water into our downtown basin, and it'll feed water into our existing system. So no water tower in that area at this point in time.
And they'll put big pumps on it and a big water line going up to Holmes Road and back over towards Magnolian up that direction, probably?
No, this, the finished water line will go to the west and up Progress Drive and tie in to the north there at Schilling Road.
Gotcha.
It's a 20-inch main is what we have proposed right now.
Okay.
It'll provide for the growth along Progress Drive for the Chambers property.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, thank you, Martha.
Thank you very much for your consideration of this.
I will ask if there's any public comment.
I just was curious, because I just saw the map in the county packet. So I didn't realize that the city limits came down on the west side to Waterwell. It's ag land there. And I'm just curious if you've been told why that land isn't planned to be used for this facility instead of the property in the county across the intersection.
I'm probably not equipped to answer that necessarily, but the wells and so forth were already there from the days of Smoky Hill Air Force Base. So I'm sure there would be, and the permits and everything were on that side of the road. I'm sure there would be a considerable cost if they were to relocate that. I don't know if, but that's the best answer I can give you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Norman Manley, against Salina. I'm glad to see you're addressing this property line issue, because this is going to be a future problem. Where does it begin and where does it end? We're going to end up in court again, another lawsuit. Take care of it now.
Further comments? That I'll bring you back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we sign Resolution 19-2273 as requested by staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and second that we approve RFA 149-19, Resolution 19-2273, Ohio and Waterwell Road Annexation. Further comments or questions from the commissioners? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, the motion does carry. Item number six.
Dickinson County Planning and Zoning Administrator Contract. Andrew Manley, County Administrator.
Mr. Manley.
Good morning, commissioners. Before you is a contract for the Planning and Zoning Administrator for Celine County. The past few months, Dickinson County and Celine County have been sharing a planning and zoning director. This contract kind of brings a culmination to that agreement. So pursuant to KSA 12-2908, the undersigned enter into this contract for the purpose of providing planning and zoning services to Celine County. Whereas Dickinson County and Celine County have come together to collaborate regarding planning and zoning operations for the benefit of both entities. Whereas Dickinson County has a trained and experienced planning and zoning administrator, and Celine County has a vacancy in this position and requires someone to oversee their planning and zoning operations. And whereas, Celine County has requested that Dickinson County share that expertise and resources of the Planning and Zoning Administrator on a part-time basis to manage their planning and zoning department. And whereas, Dickinson County and Celine County recognize the difficulty in retaining staff with expertise in planning and zoning and the potential cost savings for the taxpayers to share such resources. And whereas, both Dickinson County and Celine County have a common interest in providing quality planning and zoning services to their respective jurisdictions, and the sharing of those resources will ultimately reduce the cost to the taxpayers. And now therefore, it is hereby agreed by and between the parties as follows. Dickinson County hereby agrees to share the expertise of their planning and zoning director with Celine County to fulfill the duties of Celine County Planning and Zoning Director. Dickinson County agrees to allow their director to work in Celine County for two days a week, or 40% of his time, where he will be present and fulfill the duties of Planning and Zoning Administrator for Celine County. The director will continue to be employed by Dickinson County, will be covered by all benefits as afforded to any Dickinson County employee, to include salary, health insurance, workers' comp, insurance, and leave benefits. Dickinson County will maintain liability insurance coverage, covering the services of director in both counties. All disciplinary actions related to the performance of the director, whether in Dickinson County or Celine County, shall be handled by Dickinson County. Dickinson County agrees that director will follow the policies and procedures of Celine County that applies to the planning and zoning function while working in Celine County or on Celine County cases, excluding claims related to the enforcement of Celine County policies and procedures referenced below. Dickinson County agrees to indemnify and hold Celine County harmless from any and all claims associated with the services provided by the director employed by Dickinson County during the time in which said director is providing services to and in Celine County. To that extent, that director follows, excuse me, to the extent the director follows the policies and procedures of Celine County, Celine County will indemnify and hold harmless Dickinson County from any claims that said policies and procedures of Celine County are unenforceable or otherwise give rise to any other legal claim. It is agreed that the director will receive extra compensation from Dickinson County in the amount of $10,000 annually for the additional responsibility and duties as Celine County Planning and Zoning Director. Celine County also agrees to pay Dickinson County an amount equal to 40% of the annual Dickinson County salaries and benefits for the director. Dickinson County shall be responsible to pay any and all approved training expenses, to include conference registration fees, other related costs of continued education, and all annual membership fees for the director. Dickinson County agrees to ensure that the director maintains a certification as certified flood plane manager and continues to meet those requirements as set forth by the Kansas Department of Agriculture, Division of Water Resources. The director agrees to use his personal vehicle to travel to and from Salina and during the course of county business, and Celine County agrees to reimburse the director for said mileage at the rate commensurate with Celine County policy during the course of the agreement. Dickinson County agrees to invoice Celine County advance on a monthly basis for their share of the salary and benefits of the director as long as this agreement remains in effect. It is agreed that any salary adjustments received by the director under Dickinson County employee's salary schedule will automatically be included in this agreement. In no event shall the director be considered an employee of Celine County. This memorandum of understanding shall be in effect beginning May 1, 2019, and continue in effect until such time as either party makes written notification to the other of termination of the agreement. We, the undersigned, as representatives of the respective government entity, have read, agreed, and approved this contract to provide planning and zoning services. This has already been signed by Chairman Lynn Peterson with Dickinson County Commission.
All right, thank you. That's a pretty comprehensive, inclusive speech that you gave. So I will say that many months ago, even a couple of years ago, this board of commissioners acknowledged the fact that we were going to have to not necessarily do things the way that they'd always been done. And through a comprehensive and an extensive search for, for a planning and zoning director that failed several different times for different reasons, it was also acknowledged that this group would start to think outside of the box. This is one of those times that I really acknowledged the fact that we have went outside of the box and come up with a reasonable plan. It's not only going to fulfill our needs, but it's going to save the county a considerable amount of money, too. So other comments from commissioners? Any public comment?
Joan Ratsliff, Salina. I worked half-time as clerical support to the Planning and Zoning Director in '96 and '97.
'97, and of course, we had a full-time director. So, you know, I'm very interested in county planning and zoning, and especially floodplain issues, because we have so much floodplain in the county. And it was my experience as clerical support that the one-and-a-half-time staff we had there with a full-time director was the minimal that we needed, and really, it was really the minimum. And, you know, this sounds like a good plan, and I understand the difficulties in getting the staff that you need, the professional staff that you need. But I hope that you continue to evaluate how this works for us. I'm always concerned when we reduce staff for public service positions, that we don't reduce the amount of service that we can provide to our, you know, to our citizens. So it kind of concerns me a little bit that we would be looking at a 40% time for a county the size of ours.
Keep in mind, he's also going to be available as needed, in addition to what the 40% is. And I can assure you, this decision wasn't made without a lot of research by the administrative portion of our county, and how much time the previous director spent doing certain items. It was acknowledged that, and we have more than just a half-time person upstairs now. We have a full-time administrative assistant up there. We also have two people that are working in the septic divisions, and they also provide him with information and backup staff and so forth.
And they, yeah, that's, that's good. And I'm sure that it has been well thought through, and I appreciate your work on that.
And further, I can assure you, the administrator and his staff have been assigned the duties of continuing to observe what goes on in all departments, not just planning and zoning, but all departments.
Well, I wanted to share my concern about staffing levels. It happens so much in civil service when we try to economize, and, you know, it's necessary to do that, but on the other hand, to make sure that we're able to provide all the services, and even to the point of, of being, having the time, the staff time, to think creatively about how we improve that service.
Thank you for your comments. I'll also expand it just a little bit by saying that we were like six months without a director, and there was not a need for a meeting in six months. So that would kind of back us up a little bit, I think, so.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Norman Manley, Salina. Could this also policy apply to other department or departments? There's another department that does not require administrator that much. I think they're even less needed than the Planning and Zoning Department. So you need to look at that one, and it's about money. There's another department in this county. Yeah, you might need him for a short period of time, same as the Planning and Zoning Director. So look to that other department.
Did you wish to identify that department?
No, that's your job.
Or are we just supposed to guess?
That's your job.
Okay, well, I'll guess which one you're talking about then.
Okay, I'll tell you then, you asked. The Emergency Management Department. I mean, you'll go for a whole month, and you don't need any of them people over there.
And we also needed one 30 hours a day for the last two weeks, and it continues on, so.
That's a short, narrow one.
Anyway, I agree with you. Thank you very much for your comments. Further comments? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign the contract as presented.
Second. It's been moved to the second that we approve the contract as presented with Dickinson County for Planning and Zoning Director. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. Item number seven.
2018 Saline County Financial Audit. Andrew Manley, County Administrator.
Good morning, Andrew, again.
Good morning, again. In front of you is the 2018 financial audit prepared by Lindberg, Vogel, Pierce, and Ferris. This is also available on our website for anybody looking in at home or want to check on this. It's available under the County Administrator link. You'll see the past three years, I believe, worth of budgets. So I want to go over the high points of this financial audit. This is basically a summary presentation of the highlights of this. If you want to take a deeper dive into this, I can request our auditor to come in and give you a presentation as well. Or if you have any questions or comments, I can, I can hopefully elaborate on most all those. So on the, I'll start out, it doesn't have a page number, it's under the, it's Independent Auditor's Report. It's technically Page One, but it doesn't have a one on it, it's on letterhead. This is the Independent Auditor's Report. It defines the scope of the audit, the highlights, the auditing methods, and it does have their opinion on it. Their opinion is a unmodified opinion, which is the strongest opinion an auditor can give for financial statements. Moving on to Page Four, that is the statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash for all of our funds we have at Saline County. So if you were to look at just a basic snapshot, that would be it, Page Four. Starting on Page 20 through Page 53 is a detail of all of those funds. So if you had questions over receipts or expenditures or outstanding encumbrances, you can go to the applicable page between 20 and 53 and get that information. On Page 54 through 55 is the, all the funds receded through Saline County Treasurer. This is all, all the taxes, that's, all the entities in Saline County, including the City of Salina, all the fire districts, the library districts, all the districts come in through the Saline County Treasurer. This is a summary of that, what was brought in, and then what was dispersed. If you want to get an idea of the holistic view of all the taxes in Saline County, not just Saline County taxes, it's all the entities, it would be on Pages 54 and 55. Lastly, on Page 62, it has the auditor's results. Again, this shows an unmodified opinion, which is the strongest opinion they can give. They found no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in our financial statements, so it was a clean audit. We had one finding on our major federal award program, it involved policies and procedures when handling federal money. Anytime you accept federal money, you do have to have policies and procedures in place. So he gave us a recommendation to get those in place in 2019. There's no fines associated with this. Those grants, all the grants that we get have stipulations on them, so that's why there's no fine. We're, we're following them, we just need to get the policies in place. Saline County's had a proud history of solid financial statements presented in a timely manner, so this is something I intend on maintaining, so. Are there any questions? It was kind of a quick overview of the audit, so.
There weren't any changes as far as, in retrospect, as to what we had done, or no, other than your, your policy procedure that we need to put in place?
That's the only thing that we need to get done, and that's in the works right now.
Very good job. Other comments from the commissioners?
A couple of questions. Page number seven talks about the summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. And I know we talk a lot about our carryover being our rainy day fund, but I see the investments in the Kansas municipal investment pool of 37 million. Is that just, just for the county, or is that the city, too?
It's, this is the, all the receipts, the treasurer. This is, the treasurer's page is this page. This is not just Saline County, this is all the money that he has holding before he disperses it, as it comes in, as it goes out, so.
Okay.
That's correct.
So we, we can't necessarily say our rainy day fund is 37 million dollars.
That is correct.
Okay, that was, that was my first thing. I just want to make sure that.
It's been raining out, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's true. And, because that's a pretty good rainy day fund, and I just, I know we talk a lot about our carryovers as kind of being our rainy day fund, so, okay. Also, I want to say, if, you know, to a businessperson, Pages 20 to 26 make sense to me. I mean, that's probably as good as, you know, when you start talking about actual and budget, and it's broken down into everything, what the sheriff spends, what work release spends, actual and budget. I, I think that this is a great working document for us to see. A lot of times, government reporting can be very difficult to see, but this is pretty much cash flow statement, and, and I appreciate that. One, one thing that stood out, though, on that is the mortgage registration tax that dropped so much, and I think that we knew that was going to happen. And so I was interested that we budgeted 250,000 when we knew that that was going to be cut in half. It just, it just stood out to me, that's all. So, that's it.
Okay, anybody else? Bring it back to the chair here, and we're at the end of our, today's agenda. I will announce, under the announcements that, in relation to your, your jail visit in Reno County, that Sheriff Solden and I, along with Commissioner Shadwick, did a tour of that facility and got an introduction to all of their programs. We, like everyone else that's been down there, are very impressed with it, and it's certainly going to come into our thinking. I'm quite certain, I'm not exactly sure, but I think all the other three commissioners have also been down there, so, along with the administrators. So it, it's, it's way up there on our flagpole to, to look at this. So we're encouraging everybody to come forward with their comments. Is there any other business or announcements? Okay, I do see our newest Planning and Zoning Director in the, in the, in the House.
Emergency Management. Yeah.
Well, I see, I see our Planning and Zoning person here. Or did he leave? No. Planning and zoning, I'm sorry, Michelle. Would you like to step forward and introduce yourself to the public on TV? It's our Emergency Management Director, Michelle Barkley.
Hi, I'm Michelle Barkley. I am the new Saline County Emergency Management Director. This is week three. I feel like I've been here three years. Yeah, so we are accomplishing the cleanup of the flooding. We have some more severe weather sprinkled in this week, but hopefully, we can eventually dry up and move on.
All right, why don't you give us just a, just a snapshot of your background? Were you educated, where you grew up?
I am from Los Angeles, California. I went to school and got my Bachelor's in Emergency Management and Criminal Justice from Kansas Wesleyan University. I have a minor in unmanned aircraft systems from K-State Polytechnics. I am pursuing my Master's in Emergency Management at Adelphi University. I have done emergency preparedness for Saline County Regional Hospital, as well as the North Central Healthcare Coalition. And I did a short portion, portion of my time in Madison, Wisconsin. I was with the Dane County Emergency Management up there.
Well, thank you very much. Commissioners, anyone wish to?
One question. How quickly, or do you have a timeline of when we'll know a dollar amount to the damage that we've received?
So as of Sunday, the state made it a statewide emergency. Yesterday, the Senator's Office reached out to us, and he was planning to come do a walk-through of the damage assessment, but he got caught up along the line, so we are postponing that visit for another time. But after that, we're going to sit down with Dickinson County, and we're going to look at our numbers together and see where we're at.
Very good.
Welcome.
Yes, very welcome to the Saline County family, so. I would, at this point, then, take a motion for adjournment.
So moved? Second.
Been moved in the second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. There will be a second meeting following this in our adjoining room, so.